About a pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we want to say thank you. Thank you for this day like no other Lord God. Say thank you for seeing us through the stone, a stone stone Father God. Keep us safe and protected Lord God. Father God, the one that got hurt in it Lord God, we pray to them the faith is Lord God. Also, we give your honor to your name. Father, we ask you let corrupt this be the way to heaven. Father God, I ask you continue to bless us now. Touch us now. Right now the name of Jesus and all other blessed not as in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which we stand. My God, in the physical, for liberty, justice, and all.
First item is approval of the agenda. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. We are having discussion on two things and there was no public comment listed, so I want to add a public comment. For anybody who'd like to speak any items on the agenda. And secondly, I want to add an item for us to vote to end the state of emergency that we voted on during the ice storm. So since we're past that. Any other discussion?
What item numbers will these be?
So we will have public comment will become item number five.
We go to six.
Five A and five will be six. Yes, we'll move those down and will end the state of emergency will be six, so five and six. And we'll move everything else down. Public comment will be five and the state of emergency be six. No other discussion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Four zero. So our next item of business would be public comment. If you would like to speak to either items up for discussion this evening and you have not signed in the sheet, please do so now. If not, we will move on. Mr. Cheyenne, there was nothing on. Okay. Alright, next item would be a vote to end. Mr. Metz, was that a resolution? What process would you like to do that?
It was passed by emergency ordinance, but you can end it by resolution.
We need a resolution number. What's the process you need to do that?
If you could make a motion to edit it, you guys may want to take care of resolution.
Okay. Is there a motion that we end our state of emergency that we enacted prior to the ice storm? I'll make a motion. That'll be second. If that's fine, any other discussion? Mr. County. We are voting on ending the emergency. Any other discussion? All those in favor of ending the state of emergency with the county, please raise your hand. Five zero. Thank you for doing that. Next item, which would be item number seven now, is the second reading of ordinance one thousand one to amend ordinance nine twenty-six as it relates to non-conforming lots. Mr. Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's been no change since first reading. Again, this is the ordinance to address lots of record. Lots that don't meet minimum lot size by today's ordinance, but did at the time they were created. This could allow those lots to be developed as long as the person who's going to place a structure on those lots can meet the setbacks that were established at the time of the creation of a lot or the, as observed on the majority of lots in the century.
Is there a motion to approve on second reading? Motion to approve for this one thousand one.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other questions or discussion before we take this vote?
Hold up.
Yes, sir.
It's over nine nine one.
That's what this is.
Nine two six.
One thousand, one thousand orders.
Hold up. And I, I'm on paper, I read nine nine one.
It would be what used to be number five. It says second reading, reading of ordinance one thousand one.
Yeah, I see nine five one.
So what this would do, the planning commission sees more items coming before them that are due to a house that maybe burned down or some structure that had to be, wants to be replaced on a lot that now does not conform with our current standards. But it did at the time it was built and they're having to get variances and go through a process in order to do this. And this would just allow the citizens to use their property in lots that were previously approved that wouldn't meet it tonight now, as long as they meet setbacks and the other requirements for that lot.
I'm saying it. I'm with you, man.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure before I raise my hand. The knife is like this. Now building me code, look at this stuff. I'm asking.
What do you, what do you ask? Have building me code, look at the. I'm comfortable. I don't want to speak out of school, Mr. Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, yes, Mr. Wilson, the work group has met. Building codes, public works. Our attorney's office, administration, assessor's office, E nine one one, and we've looked at these amendments and it comes on the recommendation of all of our county departments who are meeting together. But building codes was part of that conversation.
I, they mean change.
They, they agree with the changes that are being proposed tonight.
I want to make sure.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of second reading of ordinance one thousand one, please raise your hand. Five zero. Next item will be a joint discussion with our friends from planning commission regarding ordinance nine ninety-one that will amend ordinance nine two six regarding open space residential development. We will have, just for information, we will have third reading on this ordinance on our, at our council meeting on Monday night. So any discussion tonight should be germane to either validating what we've discussed or bringing up any other concerns tonight in this work group so that we can have a functional meeting on next Monday. So with that, I'll open the floor. Anybody who has any comments?
I have something to add to you. Some of you know.
Oh, your council comments will be separate. Yes, sir, they'll be there. This is just about for your ordinance.
Do we want to go through the amendments?
Personally.
I will. We do have three proposed amendments that will be for consideration on Monday night. But they're proposed by the planning commission and also by representatives of Lawrence County Water and Sewer. And so all those guys are in the room tonight. I figure you might want to discuss it with them to get their, their thought process. But these are three amendments that were suggested based on the last review by the planning commission of the ordinance that we was doing.
Alright. You have before you counsel a list of three amendments listed as amendment number eleven, amendment number twelve, and amendment number thirteen. So we will go with the first amendment number eleven. Now, Mr. Metz, would you like me to read and explain, or do you want to explain that like last time?
Quite frankly, I'm having that since our friends from the planning commission are here that they might be willing to explain what their positions are on this.
Very good. Thanks.
I don't know where you want me to start, Mr. Chairman, or maybe I yield to.
So you start wherever you want, but land on amendment number eleven too.
I think one and two go again. First eleven is twelve, we'll get them. So if I could start with twelve, maybe back into eleven. I'm gonna read, you saw that number eleven. So I'm on number eleven. You gonna say it number eleven. But I'm, I'm, I'm reading this stuff right now. We gonna read number eleven. Okay. Well, let's, you can read it. You gonna start where you, what part page you're not the back page.
So explain to us amendment number eleven and then marry it to amendment number twelve, why they're so codependent.
The language that's previously talked about lot sizes. And what we have done is basically changed from minimum lot width to maximum densities. How many homes can you actually put into a subdivision versus what is the particular lot size is going to be on each one? Right between us, the spirit of what we're talking about with eleven. To me, you gotta go twelve back there and then we're missing.
That is correct. Amendment number eleven really does reference amendment twelve. Because really what it does is we never really had minimum lot widths in the ordinance. And the proposed change to that is outlined in amendment number twelve will set up maximum density limits, which amendment number eleven is referring to. So I do think that we do have to discuss amendment number twelve first. So you get an idea of what the planning commission is considering for maximum density.
Go ahead now. I'm ready.
I'm gonna start with what I have seen is some confusion. There's been confusion from the developer in the county as to try to do to find density, how many homes can go in. So this simplifies that. I'll try to paraphrase this in certain terms. Whatever the the acreage is of those subdivision. It's two hundred acres. Then you'll have a maximum of two homes per acre to be put into that. Two hundred times two, you can have four hundred homes. And then you have to carve out the open space requirements in there, but however they can configure those homes. It's up to the builder to, and the engineer to figure out how they lay in that subdivision, but the maximum density only for those two homes per acre in the entire, now with the subdivision property.
And it's all to be what, what land, I mean, what, I mean, what packet they gonna go through because you got two different sizes. Now, two, you may have two hundred acres of land, but the whole two hundred acres of land ain't gonna be fat, make it gather. So we just feel the same size.
The maximum density would be two homes per acre of it. So how they put it in there is up to.
That half an acre, a lot?
Oh, yeah, that's. Quarter acre, could be much less.
The conventional build in the county right now allows for a conventional, one home per half acre, so two acre, two per acre.
So now they can get two homes per acre, still a half acre, of one half, per half acre, what I'm saying, you right?
No, it's the same. So imagine you had a hundred acres and you can do two per acre. So that's two hundred homes in conventional. If they decided to go open space, they could still get those same two hundred homes. But because they have to carve out fifty percent of it for open space, the lot sizes may be markedly smaller. But they can still only have two hundred homes on that lot. Yeah. And so that's why I think the issue with the setbacks is, is they may have to go smaller than the setbacks we have depending on the property they have to be able to get that same density.
I mean, what I'm saying is I don't like fifty. I'm letting you know right now. I would have a sixty in the forty. Oh. That gonna be mine. I'm gonna, but I'm, go ahead, listen to you. When I'm letting you know right now, I'm looking at sixty forty. I ain't looking at fifty fifty. Go ahead.
That's all on, on number twelve, Mr. Chairman. I will tell you personal opinion. If you can you can have two houses per acre on conventional. You can have two houses per acre on open space. The only advent, advantage I think that a builder is gonna have is if they don't have the full acreage to build on conventional. Think in our last discussion, there was some questions of did we want to make it attractive enough that people could choose open space? Or, or the reasons of maintaining more green space within the county and the benefits that would bring. If so, I don't know that this is gonna get that mark. I mean, I think it gets closer. I think it helps you determine the max density. But I do think it gives you a metric that you can use if you need to make adjustments, make adjustments to the max density number without having to change the entire order. And you're allowed to, to a quarter houses, maybe, maybe allow to a half house, house per acre. But it gives that ability to make a change without changing the whole framework of your.
Yeah, I think the attractiveness, if I'm developing this, if I could do that same density in an open space where I have, don't, don't have to have near as much infrastructure. And if I build out the whole two hundred out like this versus I could do it like this. And so leaving the open space, even though it benefits the community kind of benefits them too. Not on every part, but not every time.
That's, that's the part I haven't yet figured out. I would think what you said is true.
There, there's gonna be a, a point at which cost benefit, they'll weigh that out. So yeah.
Now, we, we don't have a ton of comments to add to that. I think our main interest is sort of just to hear the discussion. I do like the I think the simplicity of it all makes a lot of sense. From a homeowner's standpoint or a property owner's standpoint, as well as developer's standpoint, and from my implementation standpoint. Look at a density language of two homes per acre. And that gives you something that's pretty obvious that you're trying to hit. Regardless of how you do it with all the other requirements that are being proposed. I have to see if we're trying to encourage open space while we're doing the same as conventional, I get the less infrastructure laws, but other than that, there's really no inclination to consider space over conventional.
My concern is well, first thing we're trying to put in, things we're trying to do to limit the exposure to neighbors and to road frontage. Are we really doing that if the conventional law is still there?
Now, are you not sold on your own proposal, or are you?
I'm sold on this one. I don't know that the conventional doesn't need to change.
A discussion for another day. Yeah.
Well, I, I will, I will say on that point, if you don't mind. With the ability to, to set, obviously your lot size is going to be market driven, right? What, what, what size lot, what size setbacks, what type of setback setbacks are going to be driven by the market, what, what's affordable? What people are willing to pay for. I think when you look at conventional versus open space, obviously you take a track of land. It's got topography issues, wetland issues, other things. And your net buildable area, that's a, that's a phrase sometimes we struggle with, I know. But when you look at the net buildable area, that's really where your half acre conventional comes into play. Right? You're kind of limited on how you play or manipulate that lot if you will, if financially feasible. But when you jump to open space, you have those same challenges. But then you have the option to tweak that lot size to keep that, that, that lot count the same. You don't lose lots necessarily with open space as you might with conventional because you have those other things. I I'm a bit like you, Bobby. I don't know what, how this will play itself out, but there seems to be a little bit of inherent advantage to go open space, even though you have setbacks and, and these other requirements, the, the open space requirements because you have that lot size flexibility. To a point, right? You can't make it so small nobody will buy it, but to a point. Does that still make sense, the two homes per acre or two and a half? I, I mean, I stick with two right now. I think Bobby and I have been talking to the same people. If it, if it too seems to be kind of the, the right compromise, it works. And if it don't, then like Bobby said, that's one number you can go in and, and tweak if you need to. Again, I'm, I'm speaking out of turn. I don't, I don't do this for living. I worry about the water and sewer side of this. But yeah.
But I, I do think there are advantages inherently. It's gonna be rare to find a piece of land that you can build the entirety of it and that you can get two homes per acre, even if it's flat like this room. By the time you have to do the things you have to do with infrastructure and, and you really just don't have that. So you're actually even at two per acre on on this open space, you're probably gonna get more yield than you would on conventional.
I wish I had a drawing to show the, how the two area look. It's really I mean, that's what we have seen. The look is so much better.
You came here tonight, you afford to have your map.
I don't have a map, sir.
So I mean, what, what you been going out for the?
It's, it's.
Waiting commission.
Yeah, he still afford to have a map. He's working with us.
Either way, he go, he afford to have a map.
I don't have those tools at the moment.
Okay, how you been doing? Just talking?
Well, everybody else, sir.
We, we need a map.
Come on, let's keep a level. Hold on here, this is discussion.
afford to have a map, you gonna come to the thing. Well, please, man. You can go, I, I ain't helping them.
So the developers that came and spoke to you. Well, did they see this? What was the concern they had or the? So you've had meetings with utilities and developers that come to the planning commission during the meetings to have discussion. This proposal, proposed amendment. What did they, what did developers say about that? What was their thoughts on density?
I'm sorry, did we? I, I get it. I, I'm not aware that. And I don't think I've missed.
That, that's right. Paul Harrison, our, none of the developers came and spoke specifically to the planning commission. But I can tell you in general discussions with Paul Harrison and with Lawrence County Water and Sewer and with the planning commission. The reason the number two point oh homes per acre came up is because that seemed to be the sweet spot for affordability for the home buyer and profitability for the developer. They, that was their suggestion was that two point oh home per acre to the extent they're concerned about affordability of, of houses.
Everybody come to the meeting, everybody come with no map. They just come there to talk. Ain't none of y'all that came with a map? Now, that's don't believe, I don't believe this. You gonna tell me, and nobody showed y'all the map? I respect that. That's all I got to say.
These are planning, these are planning.
Okay, it's landing, you gonna claim you gonna have a map.
I don't see, I don't see the member you appointed here tonight either. These guys are not paid there.
So I don't care they got getting paid or not getting paid.
Alright.
So y'all just realize y'all want to do what you want to do anyway. I'm gonna have a map. Military will put me outside and they gonna give me a map, be telling me a location, saying where I gotta go.
During this, you'll have a time in just a few minutes to say everything you need to say. So.
I know I am.
Let's, we keep it original. We, I asked this meeting of the planning commission and the council so that we can have conversation on what they were seeing, what their thoughts were. They do the transvariances for us. They do approvals of new developments. So their opinion is.
Either way you go, sir, you afford to have a map.
Not sure. The map was just gonna be representative of showing you in a picture form what it might look like, but that doesn't have anything to do. Alright, any others on questions on, because we will not vote tonight. We'll vote on these proposed amendments on next Monday. Any other questions about amendment eleven or twelve? We still have amendment number thirteen. If you did.
Thirteen is basically changing the lot standards from being set in the ordinance to simply saying it's gonna be the minimum setback distances permitted by the most current version of the international building code. So it's all the benefits that do with those apartments already utilizing instead of redefining that in the.
So essentially, we keep many of the things that were in the original language except for setbacks. I'll go to whatever the international building code approves, and that is the code by which our codes department operates. Yes? Okay, that's what we adopted as a county to follow. Okay. Anyone have any questions about that particular proposal?
What exactly the distances are reach?
Quite frankly, I wish I had my fire marshal here to speak more intelligently about it. It depends on the type of structure, the height of the structure. So it's really dependent on, and the materials used in construction. All have a, have the same, what they recommend as far as setbacks go. So there's not one universal setback.
We will at our council meeting on Monday, we'll have a copy of that and we'll have the fire marshals here to answer the questions. And so any questions we can't answer tonight, we will get those answered on Monday before we take a vote.
Chairman, somebody does, I would say, the catalyst behind both of those, both of them, thirteen was to just basically simplify the language. Make it easier to calculate, make it easier to manage through the international building codes that are presented.
Did you find or do we know if any of the minimums we have were in conflict with the international building code or? I know we did minimum side yard from ten to seven and a half, but I think if you can go as low as five. Which would be?
I'm purely speculating here, but I think depending on the type of material used in construction. The international building code lets it get to three and a half.
On this one, I think it would be important for us to compare those. Could we, West, could we present on next Monday night a comparison of what it would change from what we currently have to if we went to the international building code, what the absolute minimum could be?
So are we happy to research what the setbacks for like us, single and, and two-story residential construction does by the international building code?
Let's be clearly, just based on my opinion. Three and a half foot minimum, I mean, you're seven foot from your neighbor's house and you could shake hands with that and windows.
No, I mean, it's not the type of product I would like to purchase. For elderly citizens who are looking for a low maintenance lifestyle, or for younger homeowners who are looking for a low maintenance lifestyle, that might be attractive.
That will, yeah. Reason for that? Was movement thirteen that we all are, is that for that flag mission? I, I think that came out of a, out of a discussion more in general about how much do you need to dictate to where it becomes almost difficult to, to, to cross check enforce or regulate however. So do you need to have over redundant or conflicting standards? And I think the set, so I think it was just sort of a byproduct of the general discussion. Well, I set a standard if it's already set somewhere else kind of thing, know what I mean? But if that.
Suggestion, you may want to just consider if you're looking at that, if it's too small, make yourself then.
Yeah.
And outside that, then everything else for that.
Because I think we were, from, from the other discussion, it was either five or seven feet. I don't know if we ever heard three and a half.
Five is what I was thinking.
Yeah, five is what I was thinking would be the smallest, which meant ten foot separation. I don't know. Some of these neighborhoods now, I think they're bigger than that. So I don't know what the market sort of here pushing. We've made a note over here just to double check what in fire. We've made a note over here just to double check what if fire hydrant issues come in, lighting and that kind of stuff.
Was there anything else from the planning commission's point of view that based on the product that we have that we did second reading on, that's going to go to third reading? Anything else? Go ahead. Oh, I understand. Okay. Council, anything that you had on this document from second reading that you would like to discuss before third reading?
There was one that Jeff and I spoke about. It's I'll just read you some of those people have always, you know, the natural open space should be directly accessible to the largest practical, largest practical number of lots within the subdivision. I didn't worry about how that's interpreted.
Where are you at?
Change your page. Basically, not above. Not worried about that statement, which is how it's interpreted. We we interpret it for staff planning interpretation. I didn't mean, I'm just worried about, worried a little bit.
Is is that really related more to the seventy-five percent shall be in a contiguous tract? And then the largest number of possible lot should be directly accessible to that?
Yes, no, I I think the argument that we're hearing on is from developers is that that statement is too subjective as opposed to an objective standard. Staff tends to disagree with that. Um, in other words, we don't to guarantee that this open space um is accessible by people who live in subdivision. I understand the argument that it's too subjective. But the staff just tends to disagree.
We don't, we honestly, we didn't know what that meant. Like, is it like every house has to touch open space? Or is it like, if you have a subdivision road, do you do like a trailhead? And therefore, everybody that lives in the neighborhood can park or walk to the trailhead? We didn't know what that meant. It reads to us like it could be interpreted that as many houses as possible need to touch open space, which sort of contradicts the example drawing of an open space development in the ordinance.
Well, we did remove the requirement of so certain percentages of homes running or having access. Yeah, you. We we removed that. Um, so that, I I think that was leading to the trouble in Greenville County where they were trying to make sure that every lot touched the open space. Um, because there is that requirement, but we removed that requirement from ordinance. Um, but I guess the question is, what is, do we need a better definition of directly accessible?
Yeah, I think that makes it, just be a little bit more clear of what that means.
This is where the attorney and I made our code of law. Think we've already wrestled over that. My mentality in all this is try to keep it as simple as possible. And if you have put a hundred foot boundary around the entire property, and you've allocated fifty percent of the space that has to touch each other, it has to be contiguous. And you've limited through maximum distance over homes that could go in that space. Always, you you've given the parameters for somebody to come in and develop that. It's going to be most marketable. You've set the requirements of what's going to make it most attractive for the county. Do you need specified this many details? And maybe so, I don't know.
That's where I see the issue on the other side. Put something big in here to me, you know, part of the practical lots, maybe ten fifteen percent. For somebody else, it can be thirty or forty. Then it ends up with y'all for a variance request. That makes sense?
No, I follow that.
That means there's there's no number two, the largest practical number. That's different between each one of them, what that practical number is. So we don't know how it's defined.
And if it means like trailhead access, you know, more than, you know, there's several based off the number of lots, well, that's something you probably want. And that's easy to probably accommodate, so.
If they could all approach that, that would be great. Definition itself is.
Maybe to say a little differently, it it may have potential to create loopholes that cause people to come back and ask the variances based on disagreements and understanding.
Yeah, the definitions of preserved natural open space versus natural open space maybe need to be better defined, because it goes from point to point, it'll it'll jump from a preserved natural open space to natural open space and then different things have different rules. You know, Ms. Wargo isn't here to speak to that tonight, but we probably need to discuss that on the next Monday.
I mean, you're feeling removing the five altogether. I have an agreement with you about all the other parameters and when it comes to development, we'll develop them, but everyone's have to sell all them, so.
I'll be, I'm 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 neutral at this point, because I don't know what the impact's going to be. I just, I'm I'm concerned if the more nuanced statements that are in the ordinance like that, the more opportunity you have for disagreement in understanding. That's typically what we've seen come to us is when there's a disagreement, how that's interpreted.
Don't they need to go to the Mrs. Orla, the the planner? She need to be, not somebody else outside making the decision.
I think part of the process um.
Yeah, I'm I'm reading, I'm reading everyone. I mean, I want the old one and I want the new one.
Yeah, but part of the process of approval for new subdivisions and all does include the planning commission as part of the process, so that's where they would have input on it. So we want to make sure that everybody who's on the technical review committee is um is speaking at the same, plan off same sheet meeting.
Because she got a map.
Love this. Sorry to come wrong in the middle situation. I feel like what we did in the practice is where staff has recommended my thing, so we're asked to do something about there that's outside of. I don't feel like, we talked about order and then the ordinance system. One of the, one of the things we hope to get out of that is we don't have as many variances west, and we don't issue as many variances to projects like those, so I don't, I don't think. I'm trying to speak for the planning commission. There were two of us here. I don't think there's an appetite to have a lot of variances. I don't think you guys have an appetite for us to have a lot of those.
Yeah, not if it indicates, and if the primary document is flawed to the point where we have to constantly go back and get variances, yeah, we don't want.
That's what, that's what the second reading on the southern was trying to correct.
Anything else of substance that y'all want to talk about this evening before we?
Yes, sir.
I think it's true.
That a percent change that Mr. Wilson was talking about, say we wanted to, you know, put that into motion, we'd have to wait until the next meeting, correct? To correct, to get a sort of action. At the second reading, we voted on the fifty percent with forty and.
Right, forty and ten, we talked about forty-nine. About forty percent.
It don't fit, I mean, I go I go sixty to forty.
I'm just clarifying about the original, I think, that opens itself about forty to the open space.
Like, what we did last meeting?
No, we went to, we went from sixty to fifty last time. He's talking about forty.
I think i- is it something different that he's talking about?
No, it's the, it's the open space, but like you, were you thinking sixty percent?
We, what we changed, what we changed. So we changed it to fifty percent open space. Within that fifty percent, forty was natural, I mean, yes, forty was natural open space and ten was common. Yeah. That's what I was just, what Mr. Wilson was bringing up earlier. I was making sure we didn't, you know, pass through this meeting. But it's next meeting if you wanted to. Correct, any votes that we've taken.
Yes, at our next meeting.
That's all it was. Okay. Now, Mr. Wilson, the, you want to clarify, you're you're interested in having sixty percent open space in this development?
I mean, I would, it's sixty to forty. That's just me.
Okay, well, I mean, at our last meeting, we voted.
I did, I did, I did fifty, but I don't want the fifty fifty. I want to decline the fifty fifty.
All right, we'll have an opportunity to discuss this next Monday, so. But currently is what we all voted on fifty fifty um last meeting.
Yeah, I want to rephrase mine, and then I think nine nine one and nine nine two six. It like this, they should be separate. They call every nine two six, that's a long, that's a long long, it real long. That often.
Yes.
It it very long. I've been reading it now. I've been highlighting such stuff. It is long.
And it still exists. This this ordinance nine ninety-one is simply an amendment to that nine twenty-six document.
Ninety-nine nine one that we own now.
Yeah.
Is like houses like in Little Mill, White Mill and stuff like that, that are where they been. They lie. Go with this, I'm right.
Sorry, that was the word that we passed or passed second reading. It was one thousand one.
Yes, I'm, okay, that one thousand one. I'm I'm with you.
One thousand one was not for the lines.
As I said, he's always on it. I'm I'm keeping that with it. Okay, that one thousand one. I'm with you, sir. But all my gold, Liv, at the end of the day, I'm gonna read it when we leave out of here. Make, we've got a week to deal with this nine nine one and the nine two six coming up on with us. I read my stuff.
So nine, I want to be super clear before we have our next meeting. Ordinance nine ninety-one is to amend, just to make a change to nine two six. It doesn't nine two six is a document that exists. Anytime you make a change to ordinance, you have to go through this process we're going through with three readings and all. So this ordinance nine nine one that we're talking about is simply making an amendment or a change to nine twenty-six.
What you say.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure building code is in 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 the loop for all these changes, because they the one out there is what?
I totally agree.
This burger, y'all. Everyone in agreement?
If y'all see any changes, let me know. But they ain't gonna tell you. We tell me.
So I do believe that they are in the conversations on all these things and they're sitting right here. I can see them. Are you not, are y'all excluded from any conversation? Are you excluded from these conversations? You're you're included. Your voice is heard. Okay. All right, or anything else? All right, we will then go into council comments. Councilman Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this was rather quick tonight. Um, I I am believe it or not, excited about this. I do think we have, as exciting as it may seem. Um, I think we have a unique opportunity, you know, to to shape our county for the future. Uh, a lot of other places in the state probably wish that they were in this sort of circumstance where they could, you know, uh, prepare for the future. Many places have not prepared for the future and they are paying the price for it. Um, so I'm grateful that we do have that opportunity. Um, as we go through this and many other things, of course. Um, but yeah, um, glad everyone's here and not frozen to death. Really appreciate that. Glad everyone's here. I'll probably think of something, but yeah, let me know if y'all need anything. Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
Absolutely.
Everybody and still fresh the part of the year, so we are making changes and trying to do the correct thing for Lawrence County, for the betterment of Lawrence County. So I thank all of the, your hard work. Your input and your voice does matter. So I thank all of you for what you do.
Ms. Wilson?
Sir. Thank, tell everyone to Yoda Buck, everyone at the county. Thank them for what they have been against this storm and everything, all the people, our people getting safe and everything. Thanks, Bill and Nicole showing up here tonight. Thank y'all for being a part of this meeting tonight. Anything that I can do for you, let me know. And so eighth month and eighth week, I believe I have a long list to say. Yeah, have a good night.
Ms. Brown?
Again, I like it that. Thank you for playing the commission, doing good to everybody. Good to hear everybody's comments and get this together and uh, we'll get to wrap it all up next week. Now, the snow's mostly gone now, but I know there've been a couple fatalities, one close to home over our neighbor in Addenville County. Uh, some of our sale news for sudden accidents, so launched out there, plans, snow, be careful with your families. That's all. We'll see y'all next week.
I do want to thank the leadership of the county uh that handled everything during this, this both storms we had. I thought it was amazing as a new administrator, not having done this before. Um, the desire you had to stay with it the whole time, find out all the information, make hard decisions. We certainly appreciate being able to make you make decisions on that emergency ordinance, so um or proclamation, so thank you for that. Thank you, Plan Commission, for the work on this and coming and and sharing with us. I know you're involved in the process and you have to hear the voice of the customer too, and we want to get it as correctly, correct as we can. Um, thank you, everybody, for coming. It's still interesting, right? I mean, there's still people showing up, but at this point, we're like at the ragged edge, and I don't know that we'll get it. I know we won't get it perfect. Um, it'll never be a perfect document and uh, but we want to have it be as good as it can be to protect our resources, uh, to make it enticing to come live here, but not detrimental to the people who've already chosen to be here, so. It'll be a fine line to walk. We'll have a lot of conversation and discussion next week. Uh, look forward to some spirited debate, but then come together with a good solution as good as we can and we'll continue fight, good fight, I guess. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Senator, thank you.